Mr. McOscar, this is not all about you.
Sorry.
Last call for Mr. McOscar. You're still on the rolls, get in here.
I know, I'm not gonna ask that. So he has to make his grand entrance.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you now call the roll, please?
Yes ma'am, Dr. Chase.
Present.
Ms. Decatur.
Present.
And Ms. Hazard.
Present.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Hollerback.
Here.
Mr. McOscar.
Here.
And Ms. Young.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
All right, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by the Color Guard Presentation by Mountain View High School's Marine Corps JROTC. Mr. McOscar, would you lead us in the pledge when they're ready?
Attention. Present. College.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
College. By face. Hold up.
We'd like to thank Mountain View High School's Marine Corps JROTC for being with us tonight. The Color Guards with us were Cadet PFC Zach Johnson, Cadet Sergeant Sebastian Lynn, Cadet Sergeant Ethan Knight, Collect Gunny Sergeant Christian Poth, and Select Sergeant Major Jesse Scott. And the instructors of this JROTC program are Lieutenant Colonel Richard Barnes and Sergeant Major Alan Tanner. All right, that brings us to approval of the agenda. Ms. Hazard, did you have a motion?
Yes, I would move that we approve the agenda with the addition, with the substitution of moving our consent items that are in Section 10 to moving that behind our awards and recognitions before the staff report this evening.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Dr. Chase.
Oh, Ms. Hollerback.
Oh, Ms. Hollerback, oh. Oh, wow.
I tried, but she didn't.
Oh, I just got the echo over here, okay, well, I'll be changing seats at the next meeting, so I'll hear better. Thank you, second by Ms. Hollerback. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All aye, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to awards and recognitions. We'd first like to recognize Ms. Dee Daniels of Radio Station B-101.5 for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. Let's get this party started. I'm Dee Daniels with B-101.5, and this is Mandy Smith, our Marketing Director. B-101.5 wanted to do something special for our troops, and through the United Soldiers and Sailors of America in DC, we were able to offer our community a chance to send Christmas cards to the troops who are not able to spend Christmas at home with their families. So we reached out to Cherie Johnson and Cheriece Taylor to see if any of the schools in Stafford County wanted to get involved, and the response was absolutely amazing.
So as a former Stafford County Public School student, I am thrilled to have so many schools participate. We wanted to extend a very heartfelt thank you and recognize the following schools and the groups for their efforts. Representatives, please come forward when I call your school or department name. Stafford County Transportation. AG Wright Middle School. Annie E. Moncur Elementary School. Anthony Burns Elementary School. Brookpoint High School. Conway Elementary School. Dixon Smith Middle School. Drew Middle School. Falmouth Elementary School. Ferry Farm Elementary School. Garrisonville Elementary School. Kate Waller Barrett Elementary, Elementary School.
And we have more, but we're gonna take a picture real quick.
Thank you. We would also like to recognize T. Benton Gale Middle School, Grafton Village Elementary School, Hampton Oaks Elementary School, Hartwood Elementary School, HH Pool Middle School, Margaret Brent Elementary School, Mountain View High School, North Stafford High School, Park Ridge Elementary School, Rock Hill Elementary School, Rocky Run Elementary School, Shirley Heim Middle School, Stafford Middle School, Stafford High School, Stafford Public Day School, Wide Water Elementary School, and Winding Creek Elementary School. And in a grand total of what we were able, with your help, to gather for our troops, we were able to gather over 12,000 cards for the troops who were not able to be home for the holidays. So from the bottom of our hearts, we at B-101.5 and the community want to thank you for all of your support, and we look forward to partnering with you again next year.
Woo!
Doesn't he look good? Well, we stayed at, we stayed at the boardwalk. It's my favorite place. Great job, guys. I took my signs away.
Oh, but four years more, I mean, geez.
All right, next we'd like to recognize Associate Superintendent Pam Cale for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. Dr. Greider, Mr. Archenbald, and Mrs. Avery, please come forward. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Program honors elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence or their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. To qualify as a Blue Ribbon School, Rodney Thompson Middle School had to rank in the top 15% of all public schools in the state based on the performance of all students on state assessments in reading and mathematics. Please note, only one middle school is chosen in the state of Virginia, and that was Rodney Thompson. The National Blue Ribbon School Award affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging content. It is an extreme honor to be designated as a National Blue Ribbon School since it is a recognized symbol of exemplary teaching and learning. Thompson administrators and all of us congratulate the students, parents, and hard-working, student-focused teachers and staff members who have made Rodney Thompson Middle School a Blue Ribbon School. Please join me in congratulating and recognizing Rodney Thompson Middle School.[689.56][689.56](applause).
Okay, this, this one I get to photobomb, because it's in the Rock Hill District, so.
Hold your nameplate up, too.
Hold it, get down.
She's going to have everyone.
I'm the Rock Hill person.
I'm the representative of every school.
That's right, you tell them, Dr. Kizner.
to give to our two departing board members, who both have big smiles on their faces. I wonder why. And actually, I think I'm gonna hand you this box because it's glass, and I don't wanna one, get fingerprints, or two, God forbid, drop it. Yes, all right, actually, yes, that's a good idea. Ms. Hollerback? You can read it. No, it's, no, I'm being, I'm being, I'm being careful, but we do want to, to recognize, you can't, you can't recognize it with a thing, but you can recognize it with the impact that you've had. And we do, we do thank you for your time here.
You have to read it.
Yeah, you have, you can read it, and it's, they're beautiful glass, I'll give it to Ms. R. Yeah, on your foot.
I like how she picked the one that cries over everything. So this says, "Making the Difference Awarded to Jamie Decatur," and I'm sure Dwayne McOscar does who say the same thing. Okay. "For your loyal dedication and unwavering commitment, thank you for outstanding contributions towards school division goals and for making our organization stand above the rest." Oh, thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much.
(applause).
Mine also had one more comment. It was one of the best board members that have.
He's, he's just making that up. We would've given that to Ms. Decatur or Ms. McOscar.
There you go. Thank you, guys.
All right, and I am sure we'll all have our individual remarks when we get to board member comments, so we can, we can hold that, but, but.
Thank you very much.
What can I say, that's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Ms. Johnson, for picking such beautiful plaques. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Okay, that was Dr. Chase and Ms. Hazard seconded it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All aye, all aye, motion carries unanimously. And Dr. Kizner, do you have any announcements for us?
I sure do. Brenda. I'd like to, based on your action, I'd like to welcome Ms. Brenda Russ. She holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education with a concentration in English as a second language from the Inter-American University of Puerto Rico, a master's degree from George Mason University with a concentration in curriculum instruction in multilingual and multicultural education, an educational specialist degree from Old Dominion University in ed leadership, and is currently pursuing a doctorate in education from Virginia Tech with a focus on educational leadership and policy studies. Ms. Russ was named James Monroe High School Teacher of the Year in 2014. She served as a teacher leader, a Division EL Instructional Specialist, and a, and an ESL Coordinator. Ms. Russ is married to Dr. Johnson-Ruth, and together they have a five-year-old named Sophia. Welcome to Stafford County Public Schools. (applause). I will tell you, we go through a pretty rigorous process, and she was the unanimous first choice, and her energy is contagious. I think it was, they made a great selection, so welcome, and, and you're gonna work under a great principle and learn and enjoy the experience at Mountain View. Okay, thank you.
And we'll look forward to seeing you there. Welcome. All right, that brings us to board, no, staff report. Mr. Fulmer, come on down to tell us about the FY19 Annual Audit Report and Comprehensive Annual Financial Plan.
Good evening, so I'm actually gonna quickly turn it over to the partner from Terry Beckert, Ms. Krista Edoff. This is the second year that Terry Beckert has completed the audit for Stafford County Schools.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the school board. I am pleased to be here with you tonight to present the results of the June 30, 2019 audited financial statements. So our audit, we were engaged not only to audit the financial statements of the school board, but in addition, also the school activity funds. And an audit is not just of the financial statements themselves, but in performing our audit, we are also tasked with auditing your compliance with certain laws and regulations. Essentially, those are outlined in the audit specifications of cities, counties, and towns put out by the Auditor of Public Accounts of the Commonwealth of Virginia. In addition to those standards, we're also required to audit your compliance with federal grants under the uniform guidance. And so, an audit is essentially threefold, it's not just the financial statements, but it's also compliance of the state laws and regulations and the federal grant compliance. In conducting our audit, we are required to gain an understanding of the internal control environment, to essentially assist us in the planning and design of our audit, to ultimately ensure that you have processes in place to make sure fraud and error are not occurring in those financial statements. Now, an audit is not designed specifically to detect fraud, however, we do have to consider that as part of our audit. In gaining that understanding of controls, we are not issuing a separate report specifically on internal controls likened to the public world, so those that are public companies under SEC or PCAOB and regulations, they do get a separate SOX 404 audit, if you're familiar with those. Governments are not subjected to that at this time, so there is no separate report specifically on the internal control environment. However, if in the conduct of our audit, any matters of internal control deficiencies do arise, we are required to bring those to your attention. In addition to an audit for the financial statements, we do test the significant balances and transactions that you see within those financial statements to ensure that they're properly recorded in accordance with accounting principles and properly disclosed. So from a compliance audit perspective, we're tasked to test compliance with certain laws, regulations, and those grant agreements, additionally gaining an understanding of your internal control environment there and testing that internal control environment to ensure that those processes are in place to make sure noncompliance is not occurring. So as a result of our audit, we do want to give you the results for those different audits that we are required to perform. So from a financial perspective, we do anticipate issuing a modified opinion, that is a clean opinion, on the financial statements. We expect to issue our final report next week. We are going through the final wrap-up and review phases of the audit right now. One thing we do want to bring to your attention, in the financial statements, there was a slight change in accounting principles elected by the school division this year in how you account for prepaid expenditures. So that will be, if you tried to take your CAFRA this year, compare it to last year, you would see that slight change in accounting principles this year. So we do want to bring that to your attention. From a compliance audit perspective, our compliance over government auditing standards and the specifications of audits of cities, counties, and towns, again, we also expect to issue that unmodified opinion, it's a clean opinion, ultimately the result of an audit that you would want. From a compliance perspective, we did not identify any matters of noncompliance in our audit. And throughout the course of our audit, we did propose one journal entry to management to record the donated food assets of the USDA food inventory, which ultimately resulted in us giving a internal control deficiency because that wasn't recorded before we got here. From a federal grants compliance perspective, we also are expecting to issue an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. We did not have any matters of noncompliance. We also did not identify any material weaknesses in the internal control environment. However, during our testing of the Head Start Grant, we did identify one timesheet of the 34 that we did test that wasn't signed by a supervisor. So we did also issue a deficiency in the internal control environment there and just want management to ensure that all timesheets are properly approved. And then lastly, our specifications of audit cities, counties, and towns, we did not have any matters of noncompliance that we identified as part of our audit. So a couple other things I'm required to tell you as part of the audit. I already mentioned that there was that accounting principle change, however, there were no additional accounting standards or policies implemented by the school division this year. So what you're seeing this year is compared to last year, except for that prepaid expenditure number. Included in the audit, not every number is a hard and fast number, so there are some significant estimates built into those financial statement numbers. Examples of those, and the primary ones relate to the actuarially computed liabilities that you have for your pension, your other post-employment benefits, and your self-insurance liabilities. So those are based on a lot of underlying assumptions and information pulled together by management, ultimately predicting what might happen in the future. So they are an estimate. The other estimate really relates to your capital assets and the useful lives of which you're depreciating those assets. So depreciation expense really is an estimate based on that useful life of the asset. In conducting our audit, I am pleased to tell you we did not have any disagreements with management, we also did not have any difficulties in conducting our audit. So those are two areas where, as part of an audit, if we did have those disagreements or difficulties, as a board, we would be required to report that to you, and I'm pleased to tell you that we did not. So the last two things, really to wrap up my required communications, we are required to be independent in order to conduct an audit that's really likened to your conflicts of interest. So that means we can't have any family relationships or other financial interests. That would cause bias and ultimately cause us to give you a report that ultimately you didn't deserve. At the conclusion of every audit, we do ask management to represent to us that the financial statements are correctly stated, that they have provided us all of the information that we've asked for, that should've been provided as a result of the audit in order for us to ultimately conclude that those financial statements are correctly stated. So we will have management sign that letter next week when we do issue this report. So the last things I do just want to bring to your attention, there are several upcoming accounting changes, one that will happen next year. It's really related to the fiduciary activities. So currently, your school activity funds are listed as fiduciary activities. We are looking at the standard and addressing with management what impact that might have on financial reporting next year. Ultimately, they could be included in a different spot in the financial statements from where they are now. So we're currently looking with management on that standard. The next standard is effective two years out, and that relates to leases. Many of you may have heard about the lease standard, it's essentially happening not only in the government environment, but also in the public commercial world, as well as in international standards. Right now, there are several models of which we're using to account for leases. Under this new standard, we're going to be using one model to account for leasing activity. Ultimately, what that will do is require management to treat all assets likened to a capital asset, which will, in essence, create a grossing up effect of your balance sheet. So you're gonna record an asset for the right to use that leased asset, and then you're gonna record ultimately those payments as a liability for the lease. So really, it's the asset and an offsetting liability transaction. That really concludes the results of the audit, and I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I do, and I don't know whether the question should be addressed to you or whether it should be addressed to our CFO, Mr. Fulmer. I just would, for anybody who might be watching or listening, just an explanation about why we made this change to prepaid expenditures, how we record those.
Excuse me, so, sure, and Krista, if you can jump in at any point as well, but we are actually allowed to show them multiple different ways, being a governmental entity, it lets you basically choose to do different methods. One, you book it up like it's a normal for-profit business, which you, if you pay for things in advance, you would basically expense them, like an expenditure over the term of the prepaid. So, for example, is if you pay for software that's typically a 12-month term, let's say, and you pay for it in June, it would run all next June, so you wouldn't record the expenditure until the following year. For governments, it actually allows you, I believe it's the expenditures method versus a consumption method, so it lets you go ahead and expense it all at once. Because we have so many different smaller pieces, it is becoming too much to try to track every dollar of a $500 software. So if we couldn't do it all perfectly right using the consumption method, we just chose to go ahead and expense them all at once under the expenditure method. Is that?
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah. My question is related to the school activity fund. What rules did you apply to that to figure out if there was some noncompliance issue with it?
So my audit results tonight really aren't on the school activity funds, but when we audit the school activity funds, we essentially use the county's policy and procedure manuals to ensure that what the schools are doing is following all the policies and procedures that they're supposed to in the conduct of their transactions.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Ms. Hazard?
Again, this, this may be Mr. Fulmer as well. When you say that the audits are going to be completed, then that is transferred, transferred to our funding body, is that correct, Chris? How that, is it the combined, I mean, we go through this every, you know, how it works, just since we're waiting on things after we get a clean audit, I'm just trying to kind of see where the...
Yeah, and so our numbers drop into the counties as a component unit, because we're so significant to their operations, or we're really reliant upon them, so we're actually shown as part of their CAFRA as well. And so their audit is scheduled to be completed roughly around the same time as ours, which probably by the end of next week is the current plan. So both of our audits are typically completed before we move forward, which I assume I know where you're heading with that, so I'm answering a question you haven't asked, but at that point, then we can move forward and are, with our potential care, projected carryover from FY19 and request that from the Board of Supervisors.
But we're still on track to either complete by the end of, okay, I say this year, but I know fiscal, calendar year.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Be ready for the first kind of week or two of January to move that process forward. You don't see anything slowing back down.
No, we currently plan on bringing that forward in January so that we can bring it to you guys in January as far as the carryover and those projected uses and the requests from the reappropriation from the Board of Supervisors, so that we can try to get it to their staff, to get it on their agenda when they do their mid-year review at the end of January.
Do we have an idea of what that amount is going to be?
Yep, right around $4 million.
Okay.
Just slightly over, yeah.
Okay, and then I was just, once the audit is completed, I think in the past, we upload that as part of the financial, on the financial...
Yes, ma'am.
On the website.
Yeah, we'll load it on the website. We'll let you guys know, and we typically go ahead and prepare hard copies for you as well.
And then just final, one last one, and this is, I know, more towards our accounting staff. I'm sure you're very aware that a phishing incident occurred with a local school district near and dear. Is that anything that you all maybe, I don't want to say we're maybe looking more for or had any suggestions? I know our staff has been talking about it, but I'm just curious. I'm sure, you know, local government and many other industries are being targeted. So I just was curious, and this may not be your area, but it's just...
Technology.
It's kind of nice having your all's expertise in that area. I don't know if anything, training, because I know Chris has been doing it, but I'm just saying, this is a big area.
Technology.
Yeah.
It is a big area. It's something we do consider in the design of our audit. However, an audit is done on a sample basis, so it's not going to catch potentially every transaction. However, we do tend to focus on the larger transactions that occur. So we also invite management to come to our webinars that we put on, and as well as the seminars that we put on each year. I know we had representation for our trainings that we did down in Richmond. We also put one on in Northern Virginia in June. So we do invite them to come to those and send our webinars, just to get added exposure to some of the training opportunities, just to ensure. But really, when it comes to IT and phishing, any one person in the school division opening an email the wrong way could ultimately subject the school board to something like that occurring. So really, internal training is going to be one of the biggest ways to essentially handle things like that from occurring. So I know us as a firm internally, we're doing our own phishing tests just to train employees what they need to look for when it comes to opening emails and subjecting your locality and school division ultimately to fraud from occurring like that, so.
I have a quick question in terms of giving us a preliminary report with nothing to look at at the same time. Is it something that you do usually, or was it because that we only have one school board meeting this month?
It really varies by locality. Most of the time, we'll come to these meetings when we have a draft financial statement, when we're right there at the end of the audit. Really, the only thing holding up is just some final administrative pieces, ticking and tying, making sure we get the final letters from the attorneys, just ensuring there's no significant litigation that's going to impact the financial statements. So we're really in that phase right before ultimately we give our reports and go to print shop for the CAFRA.
So no changes expected.
We're not expecting any changes at this time now.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Just a final comment. Thanks to Chris and his staff. It's great to get these kind of reports. I know in this day and age, that's why I brought up the phishing, I know. But I, it is actually new information to me that you, as part of our auditing team, conducts some training for our staff. So I, that makes me feel even stronger that you all are supporting our finance staff. So thanks to Chris and your team.
In closing, we would like to also mirror that. Thanks to the finance staff, as well as the other departments that really assist us throughout the course of an audit. We really start the planning in April and wrap up in the December timeframe, so it's eight months out of the year that we're in finances face. So it's a tedious task, and I'm sure they'll be happy to see us gone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, that brings us to item number seven, the public hearing on the superintendent's FY21 funding request. Now, let me see, no one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone who wants to speak to us? All right, well, why don't you come on, you can just start lining up here, and Dr. Chase is going to read the ground rules. So just hold up, gentlemen, until she reads us.
Individuals wishing to comment about the superintendent's FY21 funding request. There'll be an opportunity to comment on other aspects of the school division, but at this time, it's the superintendent's FY21 funding request may do so at this time. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedure outlined in Stafford County Public Schools' Policy 1113 Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. All right, so anyone who wishes to address the board, please come forward, and when you finish, you'll sign that sheet on the podium, or on the, what do you call that? Railing? Shelf?
Members of the board, I would like to speak on the behalf of the students of Stafford County Public Schools to cancel one of the most debated topics, the midterm exams. As we have set back the school year, this decision has made several improvements. However, a large disadvantage that a lot of students have been seeing lately are the exams that are approaching next week. In the past years, teachers have had plenty of time to administer both second quarter, the end of the second quarter unit test, as well as since the exams are around mid-January, about a two-ish week review period for the students to prep for the exams. So with this, now since with the setback school year, we've lost this three-to-four-week time period, including the two weeks over winter, about the two weeks over winter break. So now with this result, that a lot of students are noticing, teachers are stressing themselves out, trying to fit both these tests in, as well as the review for the students to prepare them for these tests. And yeah, of course, since it's not, it's also affecting students because these are the people who actually have to take these tests, but the teachers have to grade them. So, and also one more thing to consider, this is the end of December, so it should not be, in fact, a stressful time. It should be a time of relaxing and enjoyment, but instead of actually having to take a test that is about 20, tempered to 20% of the grade. So as a student of Stafford County Public Schools, I would like to represent all the people who have signed a petition that I've created with a total of 146 signatures to ask to cancel the midterms of the Stafford County 2020, 2021 year school year, and if possible, this year. Thank you all for taking this consideration into your hands.
Okay, and could you please give us your name and address, and then sign in?
Sorry. Jake Sousa, 3 Barla House Court.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. And that's the sign-in. You can give your papers to the clerk. She'll make them part of the record.
Is she right here?
Okay, and again, we want to remind people that this hearing is about the superintendent's FY21 funding request.
I also was here to speak on behalf of midterms, if that's all right.
Well, if you would like, you can make those comments when we have general citizen comments.
Understood.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the superintendent's FY21 funding request? Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing and come back to the board for general citizen comments. Now, if everyone was listening, the remarks Dr. Chase made apply to this one. So is anyone who's going to speak that needs us to reread those? I think I see many familiar faces there, so you probably know three minutes, no abusive, name, address. Sign up if you haven't. Okay, all right, well, I think we'll dispense of them for right now. We do have three people that signed up for this citizen comment, but after that, anyone who did not sign up is free to come forward. And if you spoke at the other one, you can still speak at this one because this is the general opportunity. The first person who signed up is Richard Rice, followed by Jeffrey Trigger and Nina Montague.
If I'm not in the right place, you can correct me as I go. My name is Rick Rice, and I come before the Board of Supervisors this evening to speak about comments made by librarians at Stafford County Schools that caused me to be fired from my job with scholastic book fairs as a sales rep. I was told back in January that I was banned from going into Stafford County Schools by the library lead. Okay, sorry. And I was giving each of you a copy of that spreadsheet of the comments made, and the original email sent by your library lead to my manager. You will also find a copy of my corrective action form. Some of the comments highlight if you say that I give off a slimy vibe, that I'm car salesman alike and condensating, and that I make them uncomfortable. They also go on to say that I have an overwhelming application of cigarette smoking clone, and that I am pushing and speak of inappropriate topics. Some of these schools have not been visited for years, so why they made those comments, I don't know. The other glaring thing is out of the 20 schools that fill out the spreadsheet, 18 of them were females, 2 of them were males, and none of the males had a negative thing to say about me. So I really feel I was discriminated against by the female librarians. I've been a resident of Stafford County for 25 years, and I've coached for county, the Parks and Recs, for 23 years, and currently I coach a basketball team. So if I was truly any of these things, you'd think I'd still be a coach for the county. Speaking of coaching, I believe all this started about four years ago. I had a mom that worked under the front office of one of the schools. She saw me, and that was when I got my first complaint through the library, that her exact words were that I was slimy and condensating. So I feel this is where the train wreck started. I've been, sorry, that's just my, I'm here for slander and defamation. Defamation occurs when someone's comments are made publicly shared, and as you can see by the spreadsheet, each librarian was allowed to view each other's comments, and they even agreed on some of the comments made by others. I also have a few disabilities, include bipolar disease, OCD, and PTSD, and I'm currently seeing a counselor because of comments made by your librarians that sent me up the downward spiral and turned my life upside down. In closing, I'm asking the School Board and Superintendent of Schools to come up with a resolution package because of the harm and embarrassment your librarians not only caused me, but my family, not to mention the financial hardships we're now in counting since I was terminated from my job. This incident should have never happened to anybody. And when you have time later this evening, you'll be able to read those comments, and I want to thank you for taking the time to let me vent and to hear my complaint.
Thank you, sir.
Can you pull that down a little bit? Just pull down the two small faces on the end.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Trigger. I live in the George Washington District.
Mr. Trigger, if you could just wait till Ms. Hawkins...
I'm sorry.
She can start the clock.
Okay.
But make sure you repeat that George Washington thing.
Wanted to make sure that everyone heard that. Yeah.
Miss Randall, are you out there?
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Trigger, and I live in the George Washington District. So I wanted to start by saying I didn't write this down because I wanted it to sound like it came from the heart. Mr. McCosker, you and I haven't always seen eye to eye, but I have to say this, you fought for the kids, and at the end of the day, thank you for your service. Ms. Decatur, thank you for everything. Personally, what you've done for my kids, what you've done for my staff, everything. Words aren't enough, but thank you. Very appreciated. The other thing I wanted to talk about more serious is the Read 180 program. I wanted to say that I'm starting to get a lot more comfortable with it. We had some website issues for a couple of weeks, okay? But it seems to be that the program is working, navigating it well. I'm actually using the lesson plans in my actual classes as well. They do work. It's nice to have a short lesson that actually teaches the skill that I need to teach in a way that doesn't offend the students. Continuing, I'm still going to harp on, I think next year, the best plan of attack is to have one teacher in every building who teaches Read 180. On X-Day, they teach one group of kids for the sixth grade, then seventh grade, then eighth grade. Then Y-Day, they would teach another group. That would give you the opportunity to have, you know, 15 kids in each class of 30 per grade level, and that would get more kids into the program. I think it does offer a viable solution. I really think we have a plan to get these kids on pace to pass the SOL by the time they leave eighth grade, and that would mean they would graduate high school, and that's really my goal. But so far, I'm watching my kids grow at a rate I haven't seen in a while. I've got kids who argued with me, and they fought with me the entire time in September and October. And when they got their star score back, and they found out they were in the top two percentile in the state for growth, now they're looking at me like I'm maybe not as crazy as I dress and look and speak and sing and dance and whatever else I do in my class to get these kids to pay attention to what I'm saying. So mainly, I've got an idea. You all know my email address. I've got ideas for this. I think we can make this work if we have a consistent plan throughout the county. Thank you very much.
Is Nina Montague here?
I'm nervous, it's my first time. My name is Nina Montague. I live in Brook, and I am a Stafford County bus driver. I come to you... I would like for us, we have issues. I love my job. I love being a bus driver, but we have some ups and downs. We have issues with behavior. Ms. Decatur, I know we spoke to you. We've had a meeting about some of our issues and our complaints. To make this short, a good example, I had an issue last week. I helped with another driver's run. The kids were very rowdy. I'm one of those bus drivers. I demand order on my bus where I have to drive. I need to concentrate. When the kids are rowdy, I want a kid got on my bus and just sat on top of the seats. I request either someone take over the run, or I want an administrator to ride with me. Long story short, I had an administrator ride with me on the bus. I was told to report to the office the next day. One of the supervisors up there asking me, well, why are the kids allowed? You know why the kids allowed? I was young once. First of all, when I was young, growing up, I didn't act like that because back in them days, I knew better. And my mother and father didn't play. They held me accountable for my actions. They didn't make excuses for my actions. Supervisor was like, well, they're rowdy because the bus is late or the bus is not here. I kind of got disappointed, you know, I was very disappointed because I've gotten support from all the bus drivers, us bus drivers, we support one another. All we asking is support from those in the office. I didn't feel as though I got the support. I got someone making excuses for these kids. The principal even agreed with me, yes, they're kids, kids going to act a certain way, but that does not give them the excuse to carry on like they do on a bus. That's my CDL. I am responsible for taking these kids to and from school. If I feel as though it's not the safety, then I don't want to, you know, take them home. I need help, get us an administrator, someone to ride the bus with me, which they end up doing. But it's just the support, the lack of support that I got from my so-called supervisors. And then on top of that, I'm here throwing around, I was insubordinate. I disagree with... I disagree with that. So we need support. We need support. And stop making excuses for these kids. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? And then when you finish, you can sign the sign-in sheet for the general citizen comments. Thank you.
Apologies for the misunderstanding earlier. I'm also here to speak on the subject of midterms and more elaborate on a couple of reasons why I think... Personally, I'm not a stakeholder in this. I'm a senior in Colonial Forge High School. I will be leaving before any of this ever gets considered. However, I've noticed that as my teachers are making the exams, several of them have said that they're just purposely making it like, they're purposely doing it in a method to where it'll be more convenient for them to grade it because it's more of an unnecessary stress for them. Several students, I mean, we're all ready to go out to the holidays, and I get it. After the way it was before, where it was after winter break, it would be, you had time to study beforehand, but now, in all of my different classes, we have unit tests and then midterms, and it's just, it's a real mess. And I would real, and I humbly ask the board to consider removing them. And I understand that they are for benchmark assessments, but that is what unit tests would be for, or there would be another system for it. It's just really, it's a mess for everybody except the people that look at the scores really as benchmarks. The teachers, the students, everybody. And the students have spoken. The teachers were afraid to put their names down. Some of them were afraid to put their names down, but they have voiced their discontent to me personally and my brother personally. We humbly ask that you consider removing them in subsequent years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And excuse me, could you give us your name and address and then write it down on the general citizen?
My name is David Sousa, and I reside at Three-Ball House Court.
Okay, thank you. All right. Was there someone else that wanted to address the board?
My name is Willard Sippel. I live at 80 Ferry Road, Stafford County. I've taught for 37 years, 27 in Stafford County. I'm retiring January 1st, 2020. Back in 1980, when I first started teaching, we had one Apple IIe computer in the school. We had to put it in the walk-in safe every night because it was so valuable. We had no software for it. I used my knowledge of programming and started to develop some activities on the computer. Now I carry around the device in my pocket that's probably 100 times to 1,000 times more powerful than that computer. Back in the day, we had appointed school boards. We fought hard to get elected school boards. We thought it would be a change for the better. I'm still not sure. I moved from Spotsylvania County to Stafford County because of the pay and professional development available. I taught at Grafton Village and was mentored by Mary Johnson. She was amazing. Everyone wanted to be in Ms. Johnson's class. Mary and I didn't teach the same way, but she inspired me to become a better teacher. It was the best 10 years of my teaching career. I became National Board certified. Stafford County needs to do a better job of promoting National Board certification. Whole language, problem-based learning, project-based learning, product-based learning, it is a pendulum. It is never anything really new. Research shows that it's the teacher that makes the difference. It's the relationships you build with your students. 16 years ago, I was approached by Dave Muir. I had just interviewed for the Instructional Technology Coordinator's position at the central office. He said Jan Strick was offered the job, but he had an opportunity for me, a pilot program for instructional technology resource teachers. I think Jan did a better job as a coordinator. I'm glad I got to work with Rocky Roberts and Cheryl Hines that first year as an ITRT. The ITRTs are a great resource for Stafford County. Some people ask me why I don't stay longer, get my 30 years in Stafford County. 10 years ago, this past April, I was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. I'm in stage two now. That is why I don't smile much. I have a swag when I walk. My voice is soft. I had been a runner all my life, and I kept it up after being diagnosed. I wasn't going to let the Parkinson's cut me down. Every morning, I get up and exercise. I take my medication on time. I watch what I eat. I've gone to speech therapy. Some days are good, some are not so good. I'm retiring, and I'm going to work on slowing down the Parkinson's. I know it's time, it's time to move on. I appreciate the opportunity to work in the county, to work with such students as Elizabeth and Catherine Chase. My only advice is to keep Dr. Kizner around for a while. We have changed superintendent too many times. It would be nice to have some consistency. They might not agree with all of his policy ideas, but it would be nice to have some consistency. Thank you.
Dr. Strick, are you coming down to speak to us or to...
Give this man a hug.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? All right.
I'm going to talk this time. Good evening, members of our esteemed School Board, Superintendent Kizner, and all educators everywhere. I'm Alan Watkins, and I live on Hope Road, just down the road apiece. I'm a teacher at Colonial Forge High School and a proud SEA member. Today is a special day for me in many ways. 65 years ago today, I was welcomed into this world by two incredible parents, a wonderful family, and have been oh-so fortunate to have lived a life that I have led. Like everyone, there have been ups and downs, highs and lows, and about 34 million minutes somewhere in between there. Let me start this evening by making it clear that in no way am I feeling morose or in any sense of foreboding that my end is near. Quite the opposite, actually. True, I will not continue my career as a teacher for many more years beyond the 44 years that I have notched in my belt, but that day is not yet present in my mind. I have much more on my mind here in the present, here today, here right now, standing before you. Recently, surrounded by friends and family, I married an amazing woman, took some time off, and was reminded of what life will be like when I walk out of the classroom for the very last time. It was great. I will not lie. Frankly, after spending a couple of weeks in the southern climate, the thought of getting on a plane and heading north entered my mind, or not heading north, but only for a moment because there were other things that I need to accomplish. At the beginning of this year, we were asked what our why was. Why do we do what we do? I have been fortunate. I've always known what my why is. I've always felt my why. Like many teachers, there are times when, without warning or expectation, we run into a former student. They recall a time when we were their teacher, and they relate to us what we meant to them, how we helped them, and tell us of the impact that we had on their lives. We learn from those former students, those former colleagues, and are reminded of why we matter. That has always been my why, to matter, to have an impact, to do good by others, and to do my level best not to do any harm. It is not lost on me that things will at times not go smoothly and that there will be disagreements and strife. I would urge everyone to keep in mind the big picture and not get lost in the minutia. This afternoon, representing the SEA, we met with school officials to present what we consider to be a viable path forward towards continuing to have a positive impact. A multi-year plan was presented that would make a difference in the lives of all educators. Educators is the worm that we, the term that we in the SEA use to represent everyone that works within our school division because that is how we feel about everyone. We look forward to sitting down together with all vested parties to offer a further explanation of this plan and to answer any questions. In partnership, the SEA urges officials on this side of the street and the other side of the street to work in concert to make this plan a reality. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the general citizen comments and come to the board. Do we have a student disciplinary committee report?
We do.
Dr. Chase?
On December 5th, 2019, a committee of the School Board meant to consider one student disciplinary matter. The committee lifted the expulsion of student A effective the second semester of the 2019-2020 school year and placed the student on strict probation for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. All right, that brings us to board member comments. Now, I have a question for Ms. Decatur and Mr. McCosker. Do you want to go first or last? It's up to you. I mean, we can embarrass you before you talk, or we can embarrass you after you talk.
It really doesn't matter to me.
Let him go first.
All right, all right, go ahead. Well, let Mr. McCosker.
She wants me to get mine. Voiciferous comments.
Oh, no, he's got them written down.
I know. They all know when I have it written down, it's...
He's serious.
I've thought a little bit about it.
All right, don't start his clock yet.
So, first, I'd like to, something that was remiss last meeting, I'd like to welcome Susan Randall to the George Washington seat. She's been working tirelessly in our community of White Oak Ferry Farm and England Run and the rest of the team down there, and she's going to be a great addition to the board, and I really look forward to seeing her bring the board further. So thank you, congratulations, and, you know, I'll make sure I take you out to coffee once a month because you're going to need it. Second, I'd like to, before I start, I'd like to thank Tom Cohn and Bob Thomas for their support on the Board of Supervisors for the George Washington District. Both are great men, and they've done a lot for our county and our state, and I look forward to seeing Tom Cohn continue to do good things on the Board of Supervisors. Well, after eight years of representing the George Washington District on the Stafford County School Board, it's time to say farewell. It's been a tough and rewarding job, rewarding in our fight to produce policy and procedures to support our students. In fact, the fact that we strive to help the kids is what makes this challenging job worth it. I have many to thank. First, I want to thank my wife Vanessa and four children who went without a father for one or two nights a week, and some Saturdays. After serving 24 years in the Army, Vanessa was kind of used to it, but not the kids. I could not have done this job without the help of my wife, who volunteered tirelessly most weeks in two or three schools a day, and I think everyone knows Vanessa McCosker probably would have been a better board member than I. It was my wife, as well as the teachers and the administration of this great county and this great school system, that has my son as a pre-med at Dartmouth College and my daughter as a pre-med at the College of William and Mary. And my two sons at Dixon Smith, well, they're still being molded. We'll come back and talk about them later. Second, I'd like to thank the parents and the constituents of the George Washington District for supporting me and my vision and allowing me to succeed despite two rough elections. Third, I want to thank the superintendent and staff for their hard work, support, and mentorship over the years. I think you know how I feel about Dr. Kizner. I love the guy, and he's a great superintendent. But it's a bromance, as she said. But I wanted to let the staff know how much I learned from you over the years and how much I really do respect you. You have a tough job, and you have long hours, and many times I neglected to say thank you, so to you all, a heartfelt thank you. You really are the backbone of our school system, supporting the school site, teachers, employees, and kids at the school level, so thank you so much. I'd like to thank the administration, the teachers, and employees down at the school level. I know you have a hard job. As I've always said, it's the one at the tip of the spear that need our support and our attention. I know you think we're all crazy up here in the Bandy Building, not a clue what's going on at your level. Well, maybe some of that is true, but I want you to know that every vote that I made here on the dais had you and the kids as a major part of my decision. Lastly, I'd like to thank my fellow board members, both past and present. I know it's not been an easy journey together, but over the years, I've learned more from my mistakes than my successes. I hope that you remember me as one who was direct and upfront, didn't hold a grudge, was quick to laugh, and was a true independent board member who came prepared for the discussions. At the times, I was not an easy brief as a school board member. When I received information from some, I'd say, so what? So what are you trying to accomplish? What is that going to do for the kids? Well, you should probably ask me the same thing. What did I accomplish here as a school board member over my tenure with, of course, the support of the board? Because we can't do anything by ourselves. I did hit the ground running in 2012, vocally supporting and winning the build of a new Stafford High School. I know Susan Randall was a big part of that as well. It was sorely needed, and the kids love learning in the new building, and they finally have windows. As part of the Stafford rebuild, the automotive craft shop was cut from the program. I negotiated that back into the program, into the rebuild, and we now have a wonderful service shop teaching our kids and our auto mechanics at Stafford High School. Again, at Stafford High School, I established the lights for our award-winning field hockey team. I know it doesn't seem much, but there was a dark, lonely feel there for the kids, and they now had lights that we were going to throw out from the rebuild, so we got those put up. We also got a brand-new practice field for Stafford High School, which they was sorely needed. Now they have plenty of room to practice. With the help of my great constituent, Mr. Paul Everett, I championed the addition of varsity and junior varsity's girl lacrosse on Stafford County. It was my hope that fighting for the girls' lacrosse to be added to Stafford County Public Schools list of sports would result in one or more of our girls gaining a foothold and a scholarship in some of the great colleges that partake in this program, and many have. I've developed bylaws and chaired our finance and budget committee for years. In fact, we still use our multicolored chicklet chart, Mr. Fulmer, that he shows us every year. We also developed a budget calendar, aligned our school fiscal year so as to make sure we are accomplishing the many moving parts of a $300 million annual budget and the 29,000 kids and thousands of employees. I've always been a champion of lower-class sizes and increasing employee pay. We've made strides in both over the years. Maybe you'll remember, I was one that held out for that extra 1% for teacher pay in 2017, which the teachers received. We established the first-ever Stafford County Public Schools staffing standards, a strategic plan, instituted a formal communication department, from which we have here, and that involves community involvement and gives transparency to our processes here on the school board. Our staffing plan met one of my personal goals and some of the board members', as well, as lowering elementary and middle school class sizes. We still have a way to go, and I look forward to the next few years seeing improvement. As the chair and vice chair of the Regional Commonwealth Governor's School, I instituted processes and procedures to ensure our students were challenged and developed. I'd like to think that I thwarted a few attempts to diminish the program here in Stafford. I still view this Stafford, this program as a valued and needed program in Stafford County Public Schools, and it's in very good hands with our vice chairman right now, Dr. Chase. As the gifted and talented liaison for years, we accomplished many things together, but most important was our recent increase in gifted teachers so that every school now has a gifted and talented teacher supporting our kids, and the board members really helped in that, and I really appreciate that, and so do our kids. Well, what took our time when not governing on our usually scheduled two Tuesdays a month? Well, we sat through well over 150 additional meetings to hire two superintendents, three temporary board members, three redistricting efforts, multiple discipline meetings, as well as countless others I can't remember. We built Stafford High School and provided additions to Brookpoint, Colonial Forge, and Mountain View. Together, we renovated Stafford, Falmouth, and Grafton Village Elementary Schools, as well as several other schools, specialty schools, especially our North Star. Ferry Farm was scheduled for years for a rebuild, but due to funding and growth, we are receiving a renovation which is sorely needed, and that's ongoing now. I look forward to the invite when that is accomplished. There are a few things I did not support on the school, and that was never supported cell phones in school with some of my board members. I never supported getting rid of math specialists, and I never approved the recent calendar change, the early start, just to name a few. Well, in closing, I wish you all the best. I'm ever in your service for our kids. I will remember my time on Stafford County School Board warmly, and I look forward to the continued growth and success of our great school system. And with that, Madam Chair, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. McCosker. Sort of like going down memory lane. Ms. Decatur? There are no time limits.
I was getting kicked out of the table.
Well, lucky for you, I decided to keep it light tonight. Mr. Watkins, happy birthday. Mr. Peabody, congratulations on your Teacher of the Year. You guys are amazing. I'm so thankful to have still been here for the cookies from the librarians. Thank you guys for that. I look forward to them every year, and so do my boys and my husband. So, oh, boy. I want to first thank the residents of the Griffiths-Widewater District who granted me the opportunity to serve three years ago. The last three years have been a whirlwind, with highs, lows, amazing experiences. Why is my voice quivering? Challenges and opportunities, opportunities for me to grow personally and to also allow for the growth and redirection of an entire school system. It's not an endeavor I've ever taken lightly, and I will truly cherish the time I've spent serving our community and getting to know each and every one of you that I've come in contact with. I want to thank those of you who are here for every meeting, listening closely for guidance and direction. You represent almost every stakeholder from our division. You show up daily to enhance the lives of every child. Your innovative spirits, each with special skills and talents, molded together to ultimately cohesively drive our school division forward. Your hard work and dedication, the manner in which you are so gracious to us, when you are, in fact, the ones with the know-how, has always amazed me, and if I haven't said it enough, thank you. Thank you for the wealth of knowledge that you've graced me with, and thank you for even humoring me in those times where I, as a member of this board, have had the opportunity to help drive your work forward. Dr. Kizner, your first year here has not been a walk in the park. You have been met with some outstanding obstacles. You started with flooding and tornadoes in your first week, having you working until 3:00 a.m., and you were back bright-eyed and bushy-tailed at 5:00 a.m. the next morning. You are fiercely driven with a work ethic like none other. Your mission is powerful. Your ability to rally others, create an inclusive atmosphere where people believe in you and the mission, and then lead them as you go with them, is incredible. It's been an honor to support the mission, to work with you, and to learn from you, but I still can't figure out when you sleep. The board, this board. You guys are great. Ah, man, I typed and I deleted, and I typed. So, you each bring such a different perspective and a wide range of critical skills that, when used for good and in coordination with each other, can set this school division apart like none other, and I truly believe this. I've learned invaluable lessons from each of you. I've actually compiled a list. Meet me at happy hour if you'd like a copy. You have really kept me on my toes, and I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful for the time we've had together and the great work we've accomplished, all the lessons we've learned through our interactions, and I'm very eager to see where you go from here. I was getting ready to start on... That's actually where it ends. I was getting ready to start on all of my accomplishments on the board, but then there was a four-year-old that came running down the stairs in his underwear, and then he woke up the sleeping baby, and it dawned on me that he was one when I started on the board, and I've been through a pregnancy while serving on this board, as well as all of these other things that Mr. McCosker just mentioned, and so... But they really are my accomplishment, and I feel really bad, by the way. Thank you, guys, so much for that amazing reception. I'm blown away. My husband came home early, and he said, "Should I get the boys ready and come?" And I said, "No, nobody comes to this stuff. They're just going to come in, grab something to eat before the meeting," and that was beautiful. That's not what I expected at all. So, really, thank you, and thank you, guys, for all your kind words, because it's not about, you know, me or anything that I've done up here. It's really been about supporting you, guys, and... But to hear your kind words lets me know that you saw that support, and so that makes me feel good, and I'm really excited for the rest of your guys' mission, and I'll be watching closely, very closely.
So, you get to wear your pajamas when you watch us, right?
I'm taking this. You probably smacked somebody with it.
Yeah, we moved it out of his reach. If you behave, you can have it before you go home. You're really going to miss sitting next to me, yeah. All right, well, Ms. Hazard, would you like to start our board comments?
Sure. Before I talk about my esteemed colleagues up here, I did want to also just thank the Mountain View Orchestra tonight for their quartet. It was a wonderful performance, and I know they have a performance tomorrow night at Mountain View High School for their orchestra concert, so I just wanted to thank that team and Mr. McDonald. It was a lovely background, I thought, for the reception. It's always where to start. Whenever I talk to people about how do you write a story, I said, you know, you always start with the who, what, where, why, and how. And so, I sort of thought tonight that was maybe my way to talk about my great colleagues up here. The who, you both know, Jamie and Dwayne. What, they are school board members, but they are so much more. Being a school board member sounds like a role, but it is a lot of different roles. You are in the schools, you are still a parent, you are still a tax-paying citizen of Stafford County. You wear a lot of hats, and I think that is actually the beauty of the elected school board members, is we are elected because of the many hats that we wear. And I know it was... Dwayne educated me so much about the focus program and helped really get the board, because those focus teachers, every year, we got a few more, and you helped really educate me there. And Jamie, every time you talked about saying, "My child, I'm on the school board, and my child isn't here yet." Every time, when I'm thinking... Because I was... Remember when I calculated when the little guy came? I was like, "He is the class of 20, like, 34 or something like that." I mean, it was some, like, or actually, further out. And I remember thinking, how amazing for us to bring all of our talents and all of our life experiences, because being a school board member, it's not a defined role. It is that we... So, where, you all represented your districts, but you also represented everybody. And, you know, that's an... It's a hard balance sometimes to do that, and so I... Hats off. The whys, why do we do this? I can't speak, but the way you get to somebody's why is by watching them, sort of Mr. Trig... Somebody talked about the why, Mr. Watkins did, sorry. Your why is defined by the kids that you teach in the classroom. I know that's how I look at some of the teachers that my kids have. I know what their why is, because I know what their classroom's like. Your all's why is, we are at meetings, but you bring the humor, but you care so much about this community. And as much as we say we represent the school, the students, we actually represent a lot more than that. We represent certainly the staff, but we represent families, and I think that, to me, is the key of our community and why many of us moved here, or at least I did. I wanted to be in a family-oriented community. And so, I have watched your all's whys. I'm in awe of the many things that you all do, the hows. Both of you have different styles, but similar styles as well. I love both of your all sense of humor. I know some of us can't sit next to each other at certain meetings. When we went across the street, we had to probably be separated, you know, dot teacher. Dwayne, I really appreciate the work that we did when we started on the financial stuff, because you were a huge advocate when I first came on. We didn't have those votes on the finance, and when we got here, I... So, I appreciate that. I know our contracting officer, we may just leave as a... But I know the concept was right, and I really appreciate that focus. Your military training and background and government service, I think, really helped providing another perspective here. Jamie, your passion and freshness and excitement about being here every day made me excited. I loved how you delved in and said, "I don't want to do it the way it's always been done. I want to broaden the picture," and that I will always respect, and I hope I can take both of you. But both of your all sense of humor, I hope we continue with that, because we need to laugh on this board, because there's a lot of serious stuff that we do. And I wish you both well. I know that you all will continue to contribute, and I look forward to serving you as a parent and family in Stafford County.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Ms. Young? We're just going to go up here.
It's okay.
Is there a problem with going next?
I'm not ready.
You want to go? Oh, you're not ready? Okay, all right. Ms. Hollivack, are you ready?
Oh, sure. So, I can't believe it's the end of the year already. I think I... He was my slug rider.
Now, you're not allowed to harass him, Ms. Hollivack. Policy applies to the board. But as long as he doesn't complain, we're good.
There we go. So, again, I can't believe it's the end of the year already. I blinked, and it's December, and it's just the time... I find that every year that goes by, it goes by even faster. So, maybe we can get some of these scholars that work for us to maybe come up with something that's going to slow time down a little bit, just a little bit. Anyway, congratulations to our new incoming board members. Nice to have you here tonight to kind of say goodbye and get a little acquainted with what you're facing next month. I want to say... Actually, let me get a little piece of business, a quick piece of business taken care of. I had an inquiry, just... Maybe it was today, time's flying, asking us what we were doing with the Cliff Farm property. We keep having conversations about, "We need a new high school. The Board of Supervisors need to give us money so we can buy land and stuff," and yet we still have that tract of land, the Cliff Farm property, that we don't see... I don't foresee ever using it, developing it, doing anything with it with school board funds, because it's just too expensive to do. So, what I'd like to ask is that we have a conversation in at least the first quarter of next year about what we're going to do with this property, because we've got money. We're sitting on some money, and if we can take that money, sell the property, maybe we can give some of the money, you know, good faith effort to show the Board of Supervisors. We're trying to come to the table with, you know, something to help us get this new high school built, so... Okay, so we're done with that. I do want to say, like Jamie did, our awesome librarians, they do this every year, so this is your number six for me, and I might actually get a few out of this one, because last year I said I was going to have it. As soon as I got it home, the kids demolished it. Yeah, so thank you to our librarians. Jamie and Dwayne, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it, because y'all haven't seen the last of me, and you know that, so...
All right, we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay? Yeah, so there's that.
Next week. We have a meeting next week.
Yes.
Sorry, this isn't it.
So, this will be our last formal meeting on the dais together, and I will say that, you know, like everybody else has said, we've all had our ups and downs, but we could always rely on the laughter, and, you know, that's something we're really good at. Even at the, you know, with the most contentious moment, somebody throws out something that's so completely ridiculous that you can't help but laugh. So, yeah, I appreciate that. And Jamie, there's going to be a lot of pampered chefs in our future, a lot of happy hours, a lot of Potomac wineries, so this is just a so-long-for-now until the holidays are over. And Dwayne, 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 Dwayne.
Be careful.
I will never, ever...
We're still in slug cars.
I will never be able to yell across the table at anyone and tell them to stuff a sock in it and not think of you.
You've done that once or twice.
So, honest... I mean, since I've been... You have been here, you have been the constant on this board with me, along with Holly and with Trish, and any time that constant gets a little bit upset, it makes me want to cry. So, I'm going to stop now before I do, because she's got my tissue box, so...
Hang on.
But anyway, it won't be the same without you. It will be different, but I'm going to reserve two seats up here up front, so when you get the invitation, you need to show up so that we can have that familiarity again, so thanks. We will miss you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Are you ready, Ms. Young?
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, thank the librarians for the cookies. Was that a violin group out there from Mountain?
Quartet?
Quartet, that was great. Yeah, so, business first. Is Clifton Property the property that I mentioned to sell at that last meeting you were at? Yeah? Okay. I just want to make sure we didn't have another property, but is that what? Okay, great, yeah. Business first. We attended the V S B A 2019 Annual Convention on November 20 through the 22nd, and our new board members joined us at the Williamsburg Lodge. We were internal this time, had a nice room, too. So, I attended one important... My turn. Hey, hey.
You went to the Williamsburg Lodge this year?
Yes. Your problem, you weren't there. So, one of the important sessions that I attended was the legislative one. The governor's budget priorities included re-benchmarking new estimate costs, which is 843.9, over the benium up from previous estimate of 595.7. Also, discussion was early childhood education programs, salary increases for teachers, and school counselors. I also, on Tuesday, November 26th, Joshua Cole, Dr. Kizner, and I visited Hampton Oaks. Alan Hicks invited us, and I... No shade to none of my other principals and schools, it's just that I have conflicts, but this one, I was opened right up the street. I just walk up there. And so, we had a good tour, we had a presentation, and basically, it's about how Principal Alan Hicks took care of all those kids and even had these students that were underserved, and their grades may not have been that great, but at the end of the year, they were good with SAT, so that was really good, I mean, with SOLs. We also, on December 5th, I think, was the holiday celebration with the Board of Supervisors, and Dr. Kizner also had a little party for the principal, so that was great. Just meshing with the Board of Supervisors is really great, having that relationship with them, and continue to grow that relationship, and I'm hoping this coming year that when we do our Chair and Vice Chair, that we do not do this partisan election, but make sure that we know that to elect a Chair and Vice Chair that get along with the Board of Supervisors so we can continue the growth that we have made so far. And now for Jamie, and I did this, this is from the heart, scribbled up just a little bit ago, but I started by saying, "Jamie, don't judge a book by its cover." When I first met you, I thought you were a latte-drinking, Peloton-writer, blonde, but then it turned out that you're a fierce, caring mother and opinionated with reason. And tonight, you know, I just love the hell out of you, because you always work so hard for not just one school, but all the schools. And, you know, you made decisions, and it was for the kids, and it was not any for no political reason, and you have legacy behind you. So, you have a legacy policy behind you, so you don't have nothing to worry about. So, with that, you know, my sidekick from the Fab Two, Vice Chair, I love you and I'll miss you.
Thank you. That's sweet.
Now, McCosker, he's not your slugger, he's mine, just so you know. You just started slugging. I've been slugging for over 20 years. Right, yeah, yeah. So...
You guys slinging?
You know, right. But, yeah. Yeah, I call him my white boy, but guess what? No emails, do not call me about this. Yeah, why did I call him my white boy? I got his permission, so I continue. I love him. I love this guy. But, yeah, I know, I wish I was here earlier in previous years to help you with Ferry Farm and the vote to get a new school for Ferry Farm. Unfortunately, I came late, but we were able to still get a new rebuild, so with that, I hope, you know, you have legacy there, too, and your chicklet chart that you talked about. So, yeah. With that said, I will see you 8:00 in the morning in the slug line.
Yes, you will.
All right, Dr. Chase.
I like to write things down a little as I can be coherent. So, it's been a really busy month. Oh, I guess I'm just...
It's on, aren't I? Yeah, there we go. I attended the Tech Advisory Committee meeting. The committee visited Garrisonville Elementary School, and we saw technology being used by lots of different teachers in lots of different ways, which was wonderful. I visited Dixon Smith Elementary School with Dr. Kizner and school board member-elect Susan Randall. We got a tour from the new principal, Andrew Bathke, and it looks like he's got a lot of... He's hit the ground running. One thing that I was a little bit concerned about with my visit there and my visit to Drew Middle School was the degree to which our janitorial contractors are keeping our schools clean. Apparently, they're having some difficulty in providing enough personnel to do the job, so we might want to be thinking about that when we do contracts later. I attended the Annual Virginia School Board Association Conference in Williamsburg with many of my colleagues. I want to thank Dr. Kizner for the Holiday Coffee Event last week with his district leadership team. It was really lovely seeing people have the opportunity to interact in a more relaxed fashion. And...
And while I was there, I was delighted to get an invitation to visit Wide Water Elementary School from the new principal, Ms. Bingham. And so today, school board member-elect Liza Warner and I visited Wide Water Elementary and had the opportunity to see lots of third graders participate in the Hour of Code. And Brookpoint High School students from the STAT program were there volunteering, and students came in, they spent an hour learning basic computer coding, it was fantastic to see lots of Chromebooks being used, but it was even more wonderful to see all the students who were just so excited about and engaged in learning. And seeing these students being engaged like this made me think about some of the proposed changes to the middle school curriculum. I think with our current middle school curriculum, the average student is missing out on an opportunity to use mathematics and literacy skills in engaging ways, like computer coding, carpentry, drama, or creative writing. So I'm very excited to see staff working to make learning even more engaging at the middle school level for all of our students, but particularly for our average students who we often miss providing stuff for. So finally, yeah, so finally, this evening, I have to say goodbye to two of my fellow board members, Jamie Decatur and Dwayne McCosker, I'm going to miss both of you. Jamie, I really appreciated how you were always reminding me to think about how my votes would affect the children of Stafford County. It helped that you sometimes brought your two adorable little boys to meetings or events. They were, they were a wonderful reminder of who our real constituents are. When your son starts kindergarten next year, you will be so ahead of every other first-time parent at that school.
He'll recruit you.
And, and I will continue to remember, because I always agreed with you on this, we should think big and really try to get as much for our students as we can. Dwayne, what can I say, I'm really going to miss having you on the board, I have learned so much from you over the past two years. For example, know what your priorities are in the budget and don't waste time in the dust. If the vote doesn't go your way, let it go and move on to the next vote. You can't always be prepared, and letting people see that gives them permission to be human and to have a good laugh. Have a sense of humor and enjoy being on the board. And finally, if you don't like, feel like you have time to dedicate to this job, it's okay to stop, and that's a good thing to know as well. So, thank you both, I'm really going to miss you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. I feel like I've been in, I don't watch television a whole lot, but American Idol, you know, when they have the, the comments and everything, but everything everyone said is true. I'm going to, first, I'm going to wish the staff and everyone a happy and safe holiday, and then I'm going to take my remarks back here. Jamie, I do admire your energy, your enthusiasm, and your commitment. I know you care, I think, we all know we care, or else why in the world would we do this? You know, I really appreciate the time away from your family, your family's support, because none of us could do it without our family, and particularly with your young children. And I have to say that, you know, I've, I've, I've felt some guilt being on this board and missing my child's events in school and things going on in her life, because, you know, I chose to be here for the many. So, to that respect, I think that, you know, there, there is some, some justice, and you will be there for your children, I mean, I'm sure you'll have many other paths to follow, but, but it is, it is very hard, because I came on the board when my child was six, and it's hard, and I know it's, it's been rough for you, so thank you for, for everything that you've put into this, which I know has been a lot, including your heart, and that's important. It does make a difference, we're all different, which is, what I always say is the reason we're here. If we were the same, or we thought the same, or we all agreed, we wouldn't need to have seven people. We wouldn't need an odd number, we could have an even number, because there would never be a split, but, and I know we haven't always agreed, but, but I, you know, I think we do agree with what's really important here, and it's the kids, so thank you, thank you for your time, and I, I do wish you well. And actually, kindergarten moms are the best moms in the world, really, I used, I found, I found that out when I, when I started, I was a kindergarten mom, I was a kindergarten mom, I mean, they're so smart and enthusiastic, and, my gosh, they do those crafts, I was always so jealous, you know, they come in with these beautiful, well, we won't talk about cupcakes now, because we're in the healthy, you know, environment, but, but the things that they make and bring into school, I was like, how in the world did they do that? You know, it's like, I could never do it, it's many classes as Michael's has, but anyway, you know, I, I think we start out with kindergarten moms, and then we, we move up, and you get to middle school and the high school, and, and that, that's really, that's the backbone of our, our school system, is our parents, and, and not to leave out the dads, but traditionally, it's the mom figure, so, you can be, you can be a dad.
On the token, on the.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, we're all going to be female next time, so, whatever, but anyway, thank you, thank you for everything. And Mr. McCosker.
Yes.
I don't even think I can talk about you.
My big sister, be nice.
I know, my, my daughter calls him my little brother. Dwayne has kept me sane through a lot of tough times on this board, you've always been there for me. So, and I do, and I must say, I have kicked him at times, you know, under the table, and, and given him the look.
Yes, he has.
But he knows I love him.
I love you, too.
I really do.
Yeah. You've been a great, great, great partner.
You know, I'll miss you.
I'll miss you, too.
Thank you, I won't say anything else. Maybe I'll see you in Disney World.
Now, the poor staff and the, and the audience out there, you can wake up now, and we can get back to our meeting.
I know, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to apologize, because we don't, we don't get a chance to tell each other that we care. I mean, it looks to you all like we don't, but we do. In fact, I'll tell you a little story, just really little, at the, at the polls, my, my daughter, for the first time in the, how many times, the six times I've run for election, my daughter actually worked at the polls for me, and she got a lot of comments from people, and one of the comments was that The Game of Thrones has nothing on the school board meetings to watch. She laughed, so, so this is, this, I guess we're, we're on, we're on the other extreme, so, so we may not look like we like each other, I think we do, I think we do, I think we respect each other, and maybe that's the most important, because we respect, you know, why we're here and who we're here for. And it's times like this when we do get to, to thank our colleagues and, and to speak from the heart, because mostly you don't, you don't see that, so, I think you do today, but, Irene, would you give him another kiss for me, please?
Did you miss that? I was going to be like, what? What?
We heard that you already opened your cookies.
Okay, all right, well, I'm going to, I'm going to end this part and go to Dr. Kizner for the superintendent comments.
Well, I do want to thank Dwayne and Jamie more ways than you could ever imagine, I, I really feel like I've made two really good friends, and, Dwayne, you are my first bromance, and I'm feeling, and I'm really, I'm really comfortable with it, but so, okay. Just a couple of quick things, so today, I went to, you know, we're part of the Smart Beginnings Coalition, they meet in Frederickburg. I think this PowerPoint presentation that was actually put together from a researcher at UVA, it's worth, when you get a chance, to take a look at it, all the pages are interesting, but Pages two and three has a lot of slides of our community and the communities that participate in the Smart Beginnings, which, you know, it's birth to five-year-olds, that's what they focus on. Superintendents of all six jurisdictions are automatically on the board, okay? So anyway, I would encourage you to take a chance, when you get a chance, take a look at it. Just a couple of things in the arena of transportation, I met last week with a transportation consultant, they're probably kind of getting close to halfway in their review, they'll probably be done sometime in late February, will maybe expect a report by late February, March. They are going to meet with a group of parents through the Parent Advisory Committee next week, I believe, and they've been meeting with different staff members and looking at a lot of our policies and procedures. Couple of weeks ago, we reported that we were short about 30 bus drivers, we're, we've hired, we're down 10 bus drivers now, that doesn't include those that might call in, you know, sick or something, but, but we've made great progress there. I wanted to thank Tom and Andy and Carrie and Pam and the principals, and I know the drivers left, they had their, the ongoing bus expectations discipline meetings, I think you had it last week or this week, I forget it, last week, last week, so, we're going to do a lot of professional development with the drivers on areas on, that you hear about a lot, okay? So, I'm glad that's, that's continuing. We've been, Chris and I have been meeting with many of the account managers on the budget, we're probably by the, right when we return from winter break Christmas, we will have met with everyone, and then I'll start, I got a lot of feedback today on what I should consider, right? But then I'll be prepared, I think it's the last week in, in January, I present the budget to you guys. Next Tuesday, the governor does present his budget, as you see, some parts are being released, I sent you something about $90 million for early childhood, and we'll be hearing things in the next few days, but next Tuesday, he'll present his budget, a few days later, Chris will get a template where we could begin to calculate our projected ADM to get a sense of what additional revenue we would receive, and what are some of the offsets of expenditures that we might be required to do, so that will help formulate a budget. Irene mentioned something about a land which gave the, I had coffee the other day, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure I get the board either by silence or head nodding, a question by the county administrator, that the board is not changing its mind on the old Moncur, that, that we are prepared, once we get the final completion or substantial completion of the new Moncur, that we return the old Moncur to the county.
We don't have an option on that under the memorandum of understanding, so, it's not ours to, I mean, we, we have a written commitment to surpluses.
Right, that's, I'm just going to reinforce that.
Now, if the board wants to request something from the supervisors, that would be different, but it is not a choice for us at this point.
Okay, very good, all right, all right, everything else is good, thank you.
All right, that brings us to action items, 11.01, approval of the purchase of security cameras slash video equipment from Integrated Securities Technology, Inc., and for installation services from Express Technologies, Inc. for high school and middle schools at a cost not to exceed $300,000 from budgeted FY '20 operating funds. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hollerback, second by Dr. Chase, any discussion?
I have a question. Dr. Kizner, do we have, do we have someone constantly looking at the, the State Department of Justice, the Federal Department of Justice, for grant opportunities? Because I've seen in, probably the past six months to a year, I've been seeing articles in the newspaper about Spotsylvania getting grant money for things of this nature, are we looking, constantly looking to make sure that we're taking advantage of those opportunities?
Yeah, so, one of the, one of the changes when we did the reorganization is Ms. Towery, Dr. Towery, Rebecca, that's her responsibility, we are actually pursuing some grants, and then if it's a grant that, so we joined a couple of organizations, or we've been members of organizations, and in the past, they would forward grants, but we really don't, don't have a grant-writing team, so Rebecca has taken on that responsibility, working with different colleagues throughout the division. So to answer your question, yes, I know Spotsylvania got the school safety, one of the grants that we did not get, so competitive grants, you got to be, demonstrate a need, but I think that was, might be the one that, are you speaking specifically?
That's one, that's one of them. I know that when Charlie Jett was our sheriff, we, we spoke a lot about different grant opportunities, and his, his, he was very active in Richmond, so he, he was constantly watching to see what was on the, you know, the agenda for, you know, is this something that the, our school division could take, you know, can take a look at? So, maybe just keeping that line of communication open with the, with the sheriff's office.
Yeah, that's, that's good, yeah, thank you.
No further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously, 11.02, approval of the 2020-2021 High School Program of Studies slash Course Catalog.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Young, second by Dr. Chase, any discussion?
Ms. Healy, just a comment, this is not regarding exactly the course of studies, but I think I, I talked about it before, and this is for a future action with the board, I just wanted to put staff a little bit on, on Dr. Kizner, on notice that I love that we have so many things in our, in our course catalog, however, I do become very concerned when I start hearing about that teachers, especially in the AP areas, are not qualified to teach those areas, and how we are going to do that, is it that then we don't offer that course, or do we just stick a teacher in there? I have heard stories, and I'm not saying that that teacher is not trying, but if that is not their area of expertise, I do think we need to really look at what we're offering. So, just for a discussion in the future, just because I, our students deserve the best, and I want us to offer the best, but if for some reason we cannot meet that need, I am wondering about these technology, other avenues for us to, to pursue. So, that's just a broader one about the, I love our course offerings, but I do want to make sure that we can back them up with teachers qualified to teach them, so, just a comment.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. McCosker?
I would just like to thank, thank the team for doing this, and also just a special thank to Dr. Chase for the CGS SEAL work that she did with the, with the team, the regional team, so I really appreciate that, and I think it's going to be great for the students.
Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Last action item, 11.03, approval of the school board's FY '21 budget priorities.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Young, second by Dr. Chase.
Second today.
Second, second.
Yeah. Third second.
Whatever, it's the second for this one. All right, any discussion?
At the risk of being difficult, I, I have a, I just feel like when we take this across the street, we are not saying what we want to do. It appears we are just asking for money to be like everybody else, and I know we have an across-the-board salary increase and improved staffing ratios. My concern with this, although I think this is a great document, my concern is, I am just not sure how this will be received across the street, because I just don't feel like we are saying that. When we say develop a multi-year plan, I, I don't know if we're saying we're going to adopt what the S E A has been proposing, I'm not sure what that is yet, I just, I, there's something, I, I'm just not sure we're saying what we want to say, but it may be that this is to give Dr. Kizner and the staff guidance to, for me, I think in outline form, develop a multi-year plan, then we would show the plan, what, how the board and the salary increase will impact our, our competitiveness, because I, I think that's really what we are trying to argue, is, is we are not competitive, but we have to prove it. So, I'm just, I'm struggling, I have to say, but I'm not, you know, I just, I'm struggling.
Ms. Young.
So, we, we had our goals, right? And we had many goals last year, we had. We had many priorities, more than these. And so we streamlined them down. We approved the goals last meeting, right? And these are the priorities. So I did ask the school board members, you know who you are, to come up with something. What I don't want to hear is that you don't agree or you don't approve, but you don't have anything else to offer. And so either you reapprove this, because this is just guidance, like you, like you stated, because if we get a certain pot of money and we have to start cutting, we wouldn't know to embrace and make sure that we don't cut these, because these are our priorities. So if you have other priorities that are not these, bring them to the table and then let the team know, Dr. Kizner and staff. Because, you know, you elect a fab to speak on your behalf. And this is what we do. Time and time we meet, and we discuss this, and we come back and we ask. And so if the three of you have something to offer that is better than this, then, then bring it to Dr. Kizner and the staff. That's all I have to say.
I would like to note, I did provide input, so before.
Yeah, sure, but the input, you know, what the input, it was, yeah, yeah.
I didn't want it to be appearing that I did not contribute to.
So, no, thank you, Madam Chair. So, so I, so I see this as, no, I, I think they're, they're both great points, and, and I agree with both of you. I do, even my last board meeting, right? I'm going to be nice, so.
Must be a George Washington thing, you know, your predecessor, or two predecessors ago. My daughter, who was five at the time, used to call him Switzerland.
Yeah, Switzerland, yeah, we're Switzerland.
He would agree with everyone, and he, and he did it well.
So the priority, yeah. So the priorities are, are spot on. And so what this is, the, the impetus to, this, this should be followed through an implementation plan. And we discussed that, that behind the per, you know, per pupil cost, we discussed about how we need to know how, and they, and they need to know, how we'll move forward with that. Funding across-the-board salary increase and target addition. I think we'll need to have, you know, what we want to bring forward in the budget for that, for that issue. And then improving staffing ratios, we'll have to give them the staffing ratios that we want to work on. So, so there is a follow-on to this. But I mean, this is perfect as it is, as a priority. Once we vote on it, the staff will have extra work to do to go ahead and back this up with the board's intent. So that's how I see this document.
And we're having, don't we have an opportunity to kind of, I mean, this could be used as, you know, the agenda for our, our, you know, joint meeting that we're going to have in January. So, you know, that, that will help, you know, you know, guide our discussions and then do, and then when we come back, follow up with an implementation plan. So I think it's, I think it's doable, I'll support it.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, you know, I think for, for the fab, one of the things that we have really been kind of struggling with is that the board members bring up, you know, we, every year talk about that we need to be more competitive in salary in order to get more staff. And then we, in the last couple of years, at least, we've, we've been successful at getting money for salary increases. But then board members bring up the fact that, that's great, but there's nothing left. I mean, we're not able to handle other things. And so I think the fab was really trying to capture some of that in this first, first bullet item was how do we have the conversation across the street about the fact that we get the salary increase, but then we don't have the ability to put a bus attendant on every bus to help us keep bus drivers and maintain sort of safety on those buses and, and, and many other things. So I think that's kind of where this first item is, is trying to, to find a way to have that conversation.
Ms. Healy, if I could make, just before.
Sure, sure.
Part of the reason I love being on a board is us, our ability to say, I'm struggling with, and then having members say, here we go. You know, here's where, where we're coming from. I, I really like the idea of us saying, you know, let's approve this. But I think the direction, I would hope that this document can be used, sorry, Dr. Kizner, is sort of then, I think, in outline form, like here, and I'm sure Mr. Fulmer has to be part of this too, is then say, one, A, B, C, D, E, how do we meet it? Two, A, one, two, three. Because I, I do think that, but I do think, as, as I shared with the other board, a couple of the board members, I do believe we're going to have to be very upfront on the costs that we do not control. The VRS of one point seven million dollars is a big hit for us. Now, it's better than the seven point eight million that Mr. McOss, when I first got on the board, we had to swallow, and that was really tough. But I do think as part of our talking points, we are going to have to be very cognizant of some of the stuff we don't control and making that very clear. I will be supporting this if, but I wonder if my guidance of saying, can we kind of, does that make any sense?
Yeah, so sometimes it's, I know it's your discussion, but sometimes it's good to get the superintendent included, because I think I, I was anticipating, I knew where you were going with this. What you're going to see, we already showed it to Fab as a draft, is this is today's per pupil expenditure. I think we have to demonstrate, if we got towards the average, what will we be, what could we do that we're not doing today? Just to say the increase to per pupil expenditure, I'm not sure if I would go for that. What, so we, we put together, it's just a draft, because again, we're still working. So you're going to see, I believe, a, a three-year plan. If, we, we know we're not getting to the average in one year, we're not, we're not naive. So you're going to see a per pupil expenditure diagram, a dollar bill. This is what we're doing today. This is what we could do tomorrow if we go up this much, this is what. And then you'll see when we hit the average.
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Dr. Kizner just mentioned, I thought you were going to have it as a draft, just to show real quick so that they could see it, because the rest of the board did not see that.
It's the financing budget.
But we could, yeah, we.
Well, I mean, we could do it if we find, but it's a draft.
Yeah, well, we could send it, we could send it to you all.
Wouldn't you put something out there? Then it's out there. I, I think you would.
Yeah, it was a draft. But one other thing, it was like, okay, one of the things, if we get to the median, this is what we could, we could buy. Or we could, we could get mental health, or we could get certain amount of multicultural teachers, or whatever it is. So it, it's about getting that money and being able to, so it ties into what you were talking about, Holly.
With, with regard to number one, would the board be open to saying, because that's the only one that doesn't say, when we say develop a multi-year plan to annually increase Stafford's per pupil expenditure with the goal of reaching the state average, to me, it's more than reaching the state average. It's to impact the students in Stafford County, to quantify what.
Reaching the state average and impact, we could put the and.
Something about, because to me, it looks like the emphasis, ooh, we just want to meet the state, straight at state average. I want to offer amazing.
Yeah, to push to, I, I'm tough to you guys, but I think there's something.
But you know what I'm saying? To, to make the focus be, what it's, just like you said, what would we do with this money? And to reach the state average with, with a goal of reaching the state average for pupil, per pupil expenditure.
Improving student learning.
And improving student experience.
The, the Virginia profile, something like that, about the Virginia profile, student.
Taking it to our students, not just making the goal the state average. That was, that was, that would be the.
So can you, can you bring that language and?
Let me try to work on it for a second.
Can you grab it?
If you all want to move through a couple of other.
Okay, well.
Sure, we'll, we'll come back to that.
While Ms. Hazard's coming up with some magic language. Actually, that's my concern with this. And as it's written, I could not support this as a priorities. Because my priority is not just to get more money. I did two and three, I'm, you know, I'm on board with those. But, but to me to say, you know, my top priority, or one of my, even if it's one of my three top priorities, is to have more money, that's not good enough for me. Yes, you can buy more things, but, you know, what is the priority? What are we going to do? What would we do if we had that money?
So that, that's what's in the draft, yeah.
Because I, I just, maybe I'm just too conservative fiscally, but I, I don't want to have my priority to have more money. And I, I think, Dr. Chase, you raised this at the last meeting. And you said, well, can't we say what we'd do if we had more money? And that's where I thought we would be going. And it sounds like maybe, maybe it is, but it's just not.
Finding a way to make it a.
Public.
Right, finding a way to make it a social set.
That was hard.
And then, and then the, the implementation plan will, will follow up and, and identify all that. You can't do that in your priority statement.
Well, but, but what I'm saying is, and I'm speaking for myself, you know, and I, and I, you know, I'm one vote here and, and, you know, I may very well be the only one, you know. But to say that my priority is to devolve a plan to increase the per pupil expenditure to meet the state average, to me, that's not good enough. I mean, not that I want more, not that I want less, but what does that tell me? What is the state average? My gosh, how many districts are in the state? I mean, some have a lot, some have nothing. Just to be the average, that doesn't tell me something. That's not my priority. My priority would be what I want to see done for the Stafford County public school system, whether it's particular items. And I don't want to just say, get more money so we can do, you know, one of these many listed things. But that, that's just me. So I'm, I'm good with being the only one, I'm.
No, it's okay, Holly's gonna, Holly's gonna propose it.
Okay.
She, I just wanted you to see it.
Yeah, go ahead and read it, yeah, go ahead and read it, Holly, and see how we could, see if.
How about develop a multi-year plan to annually increase Stafford County's per pupil expenditure with the goal of enhancing the educational experience for all students in Stafford County. And I think we say, and providing a competitive, you know, it's something about saying we want to be.
So you're not done yet, keep writing.
We can leave it with, how about annually increase Stafford County's per pupil expenditure designed to enhance the education? It's something like, the per pupil expenditure is supposed to impact the students, that's what.
So you're looking for that word impact, and we didn't put it in there, to impact.
With the goal of enhancing.
Yeah, I know, and just as, as you write, I'm not going to help you with your wording, but just as you write it, I just want to talk. So I guess, no, and I, and I, and I fully understand where you're coming from, Ms. Healy. And you can't just say, I want more money to want more money. At the same time, and maybe I need some help with this, but I, you know, I thought that a hundred and twenty-first out of a hundred and thirty-two school divisions, when we're in our ranking from who gets the most money to who gets the least money, it would be one hundred and thirty-second school. Is a hundred and twenty-one, is that the number that a, a county as wealthy as Stafford should be at? I guess that, that's one question, you know, that I always thought that that was a bad thing. That why are we, let's, let's just say that we're the, in the state of Virginia, we're the fifth wealthiest county. You know, Fairfax, Loudoun, Prince William. I, I would expect to see, I don't know, maybe in the twentieth per pupil, you know, it's just that correlation of, you know, a northern Virginia-type county like Stafford, which is kidding, you know, more, almost like we're moving north, more north. Is a hundred and twenty-first out of a hundred and thirty-two, is that, is that indicative of something that we're not doing right at the state or county level? That, 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 that's just my.
Well, that's, that's a good question. But the question is, what do we need? What, what do we not have that we would have if we had the funding?
And that's the.
That's my question.
No, and that's a good.
And if you tell me what that is, you know, I would most likely not disagree that that, that could be a priority. But just the, the more money, I want more money because other people have more money. That's just not good enough for me.
No, and I, and I think that the priority document should be the base document by which you follow on with the further implementation plan to show, here are the things that we can do with this extra money. I totally understand that. I just don't think that's the place for it on a priority document, which is kind of supposed to be a synopsis of your, hey, we want to move towards this. And then in that, maybe there's a strategic plan correlation here, you know? Maybe there's some, that, that's just how I see the priority document.
If I could, if I could offer this, eighty-five percent of our budget, like most school budgets, are going to salary and compensation. We could not even fund to the starting point of our compensation study. We got there halfway. We talk about competing, well, you know what? The median home in Stafford is the same thing as the median home by twenty thousand dollars in Prince William County. All right? We talk about trying to attract and retain and, 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 and honor seniority in our school system. Well, how are we going to do it while we're growing and have all these positions? The example of the bus monitor? Yeah, one of the issues that we know that it's on a bus, the bus driver's got to ride forward, look forward. No one behind, here she. So there is a lot of things, but it's going to cost money. I mean, we, we can't keep saying this is an issue and issue and then not try to advocate respectfully, but forcefully, to get a higher per pupil expenditure. This is, it's your call, but to raise salaries and meet compensation requirements and do the VRS, then that leaves us very little to do other things. We have very few dollars for compensation, for discretionary. We got to make sure the lights are on, got to get the heat. So I, I, I don't think we, I think this is a good goal.
So my question for that would be, where would this extra money go? Would eighty-five percent of this extra money go for salaries? If not, if so, that, that's a number two. And you, you know, where's the other fifteen?
I think it goes where your number two is, and I think it goes where your number three is.
Right, but, but then it's in one.
But you have to do it with, I, I think, again, I, I do agree that, I don't know if it's in the priority list, we have to show what, what the extra dollars would, would be directed towards. And I, I'm just being honest with you right now. We should not, if you look at that thing I gave out, in our area, they said we're the wealthiest county. Every school system on that list has a better per pupil expenditure. We showed you last week, even without debt, we still remain the lowest. I mean, when we compare to Northern Virginia.
Go ahead and read it, Holly.
Okay, before you, before you do that, just for, for another time, I would like to look at the local percentages, the contributions from a local percentage. Like, we know how much our locality contributes to the school system. I'd like to look at that for some of these other, just for comparison purposes.
Yeah, that's.
Because I can tell you, when I first came on the board, it was close to fifty percent went to the schools, maybe even a little more. Now it's a lot lower percentage, but it's still, you know, a healthy chunk because the county has so many more demands on it. You know, in, in the past, we had volunteer firefighters. We have paid firefighters now. We, we have a, a need for more law enforcement. We have a need for more social services. We have, the court systems, you know, have an incredible burden right now. The roads, yes. I mean, there's all kinds of demands for those dollars coming into the county. So I don't want to appear ungrateful for what we do have from the county and just say, I want more for the schools. Of course, we, I mean, I want, I want to be competitive. I want our children to have, you know, exceptional opportunities. But I don't want to just say, I want more money. If, if, if I want the money for the salaries, and let's say we want the money for the salaries. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to, you know, talk anymore, because y'all know where I am. But, but that's the reason that I'm not going to support this, just because, you know, I, I, I would want to know what we're going to do it for, okay? All right, so Ms. Hazard, did you want to read something?
I would like to read a proposed, number one. Develop a multi-year plan through annual increases to Stafford County Public Schools' per pupil expenditure to enhance and provide a competitive educational experience for all students.
SCPS.
Oh, all, okay, I figured they were Stafford County Public School students. But yes.
Second.
Yes, I was just going to say.
Okay.
And we agree.
So we amend, there's nothing, do we amend?
Educational experience?
Yeah.
What does that mean, a competitive educational experience? I'm just trying to flush it out.
I think, I think because if you are looking at other localities and the amount of funding that they have, they are providing potentially more competitive opportunities for our students. Either it's class size, it can be type of programs, that kind of stuff. And it may be different for each one. But I was trying to come up with something that I thought captured what we were trying to say.
So my question is, is can this be articulated on the twenty-first of January, number one? And number two, can we look at them and say, okay, you're, the details of, of our, you know, our plan, our, our priorities are forthcoming, and you'll get them by X date. So I, I think that will be important to.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the detail is the profile of a Virginia student, which is what Dr. Kizner and his staff is working on.
Yeah, as long as we can articulate it.
When I present the budget to you at the end of January, you'll get a lot of details. This is just your budget priorities. My budget is different. You guys, once I turn it over to you, it's your budget.
This is, this is our priority.
Okay, there was a call to question?
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No?
Pull the board. Pull the board.
Aye.
Ms. Decatur.
Aye.
And Ms. Hazard.
Yes.
Ms. Healy.
No.
Ms. Hollerback.
Lonely.
Mr. McCosker.
Yes.
And Ms. Young.
Yes.
That's all right. It's not going to be the last time.
Oh, it will be the last time.
For me.
Oh, yeah.
All right, well, moving right along, that brings us to information item 12.01, which we've been asked to move to action by staff. Approve the award of a contract in the amount of $107,176 to Mosley Architects for Design and Construction Administration Services for the installation of kitchen air conditioning at seven elementary schools and two middle schools. Who have a motion on this one? It's information, but we've been asked to move it to action.
Move to action?
Second.
Second, my, second again by Dr. Chase. First by Mr. McCosker. Now I heard her. I'm awake now.
Until the county gives us the money for the action.
Okay, we have a motion to move it to action in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries unanimously, Ms. Hall. All right, do we have another motion?
Move to approve.
No, no, I just want there to be discussion, make, put it on the table.
Move to approve?
Okay, that's, second was by Ms. Decatur. You missed that one, Dr. Chase. And Mr. McCosker's really on a roll here. Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Healy, one of the questions that we have is this $107,176 out of what we are hoping to get from carryforward funds? Or is this separate funding?
Well, since I want to get started right away, I would hope it's not carryover.
If we are hoping to get the money in Janu- in January, I don't want to get, I don't want to, I don't know, just.
They're going to award it promptly so the design work can begin immediately.
Only if that money is coming from somewhere else.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah. So our, our plan was to use our, and so to use our current operating dollars out of the facilities budget that has been set aside for architectural design fees, so that we can get the project started, to get the designs started so that when we get the carryover money in January or February approved, that we can start moving forward. Otherwise, we'll still be set back and potentially not have the work done in the summertime.
Okay, the question I have on that is, is the figure that we used in our letter that went across the street, does it include pre-production? I don't know, whatever word you would use, or is that just construction? Because I don't want to get, I don't want to get the question of, anyway, you know where I'm going. Yes, Mr. McCosker, I'm looking at you to see, do I, am I making sense?
I understand.
Right, we have a budget on the 3R list, 1.617, 1,617,000. So that does include the design money, the 107,000, plus a contingency. So it's for the whole project.
Let me just, this is where I may just disagree a little bit with my staff. I'm not totally sure what action we're asking you to take. First, we didn't get the Board of Supervisors to approve this.
Oh, you haven't got them to?
No, remember, that's all continued upon the audit to finalize it. This is going to be what we're going to come back to you. That's on your, that was on your preliminary list, that along with some other things. So I'm just, don't want us to go fast forward, spend 107,000.
Yeah, I can help you with this, Dr. Kistner. So, and I'm new, so I may be making a misstep.
You could use it for at least a couple of months.
So we have a, no, we have a, we have.
He's still saying it after a year and a half.
We have a total amount that we need to have approval from the board to spend. We won't spend that right away, so we can begin the design process and then stop until we're comfortable that we're going to get the money. And that would be the schematic design phase. So that if for some reason this all of a sudden did not become, was not a priority, we could cancel the project. Based on the readings that we found around the county schools and the kitchens, I mean, some of these are getting up into the 90s. So it's a really bad situation for several of these schools. And for us to get it done over the summer, we really need to get started now. So I can't really start with an architect and an engineering team and not have your approval because that would involve piecing this together, which is not an efficient way to get the project completed. But what I can assure you is that we can come, we can come to a stopping point with the project so that if, if for some reason it's not approved by the Board of Supervisors or we don't have the funding to move forward, then we can stop the project. And also, since it's nine schools involved, we would be able to take care of the worst schools. We've done temperature readings and we know which ones get the hottest in August. And those would be the highest priority for the summer. So all we're asking for is to get started and to not have to come back and ask for an approval after we've already done more design work. I want to be very forthcoming that this is a contract we need to award and just do this one time.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. It's a, it's a goal for me simply because these are schools, all elementary schools, and I can't see anybody not voting for the health of our children. So, but the design itself, how much is that?
It's 88,000 for the design and then the additional funding is for the construction administration, which would only be approved after the construction is awarded anyway.
So what would be, what's the deficit? How much money are we working with that we need? How much do we have or how much do we need the Board of Supervisors?
To get the entire project done, it's 1,617,000 dollars. And that's on, that's the amount that's on our 3R list.
Okay, I can, I don't see why we can't get.
It's your decision. My only concern I was raising is I don't like the idea of spending money until I get, even if it's a dollar, until I get a commitment from the Board of Supervisors that they're going to support this. I'm not suggesting they're not going to, but they haven't taken any formal action. And the other thing that I would raise is we are taking this out of limited money that we have for other projects. Why don't we ask as part of our carryover request? And I understand the delay, but I'm not totally convinced the delay would be that much. If the auditors were saying that they're going to complete this thing in January, why wouldn't we just roll in our request, this request? Because I think if I understood you Monday morning, this is going to, unless you're taking it from another line item now, this was take, this was a, this was a good part of whatever budget you had to address this and there's so many other needs. So that's my only concern. Two concerns is commit before we got a commitment and two, take it out of a limited budget. That's my only concern.
Does it say somewhere in in the document that we're going to send over there pending Board of Supervisor approval? I mean, just so that we're not sending it over there with the expectation that we're going to get it. It's just that we're kind of asking in the document, whatever document.
I think that's what we, we sent over. At this point, all we're being asked to do is to approve the design. So whenever we do it, we're going to have to have the design. I assume we're not going to make any changes to the kitchen in the foreseeable future. So whatever this design is should still work. And if we don't do this now, then it's unlikely we're going to be able to get this work done before the school starts in August.
That's the concern. And I can certainly come to a stopping point. Just getting through this process takes time. So if I'm waiting for another board meeting, then, you know, so I, I think maybe the solution would be to have a stopping point in the contract and I can set that with you. They need to do an evaluation of all the schools and and do some study before they begin the construction documents. So we could limit it to even like.
I just want the board to see that I could be very conservative.
But you're the one that brought it to us for action tonight. I'm confused.
And Madam Chair, I must, I will admit, you know, the, the Board of Supervisors are all behind this. I don't see the Board of Supervisors. This goes across the whole district.
This came from the Board of Supervisors.
I would like to say there's no Rock Hill schools here, but I am supporting this tonight.
Yeah, so let's, let's.
And I can write it into the contract to have a stopping point. But I've spoken with the engineer and they agree. We could cancel the project if we have to.
Can I have one comment before?
Okay, I thought this was made a quick meeting, but oh, well.
A couple of seconds, Holly.
Well, the reason is, is I pulled up our letter to the Board of Supervisors. And we said that we are already doing a detailed mechanical study for each location. So I guess I'm trying to understand, what are we now funding?
So we have done the study and and then that helped us to understand exactly what needs to be done at each school. This amount is for the entire design and engineering process as well as the construction administration. And because it's over 100,000 in total, I didn't feel comfortable going forward with just a part of it. I wanted to get approval for the entire thing so that we could continue with the same architect, you know, with full transparency with the board.
That line continues that this will be approximately 160,000 per site, including design costs. I just do not want to be told that we ran up the costs of what we're asking them for with with that in here. I, I certainly support this project, but I don't understand the stop. But if others do, I am willing to be.
I don't know no stop when you start this project, just get it done.
Well, plus, this early school start is, to me, what's driving this. If we're going to start school on what, August 10th next year, meaning, you know, people are going to be back in the first week in August.
And boiling in the kitchen.
And we want to have these, these kitchens ready. Unfortunately, I don't think it's the students, but it's, it's our kitchen staff that suffer. And they are not complaining, but they deserve to have, you know, a reasonable working environment.
The kids walk through that line in that kitchen area too.
We're going to have to do it. We've all said we wanted to to get it done. This just gives us a jumpstart on getting the design ready. So when we do get the money, we get the rest of the money to have it done, then we can hit the deck running, get those plans and and have it start the day after school gets out and have it done before they come back.
Call the question, Madam Chair.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Hazard.
No.
Ms. Healy.
Yes.
Ms. Hollerback.
Yes.
Mr. McCosker.
Yes.
C.
That means yes. All right, moving right along, 12.02, approval revisions to policy 4404 overtime and compensatory time. This is coming back at the next meeting. If nobody has any burning questions, we can just send them to the superintendent. Ms. Decatur or Mr. McCosker have any questions? No, all right, all right, let's move on. 12.03, approval of a proposed change to 2019, 2020 school year calendar.
Madam Chairwoman, I would like to move that we move this to action because the only change to the current calendar is closing school for the primary, presidential primary. And it would be good for families to know this as soon as possible for planning purposes.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I think Ms. Young got that one in first, unless you want to refer to Mr. McCosker.
No, I'm with that. I'm with Sarah.
Okay, that's Dr. Chase and Ms. Young. I'm going to support this motion because it doesn't affect anything else in the school year other than making March 3rd a holiday, which will help, I think, all our 15 schools that are polling places. Plus, I think the, the, their, the staff will appreciate that day. That is a staff day.
I have a question about that. This was brought to us two years ago, I think, and I thought we were going to make this kind of a standard. We were not going to, if our schools were going to be used as polling places, that we were not going to have school on those days. Why wasn't this originally rolled into the calendar to begin with?
That's a good question. We'll research that and get back to you.
Thank you.
But we are correcting it now.
Can we automatically do it next time too?
Well, that's up to the calendar committee, which we can maybe get you sitting on. All right, any other questions, discussions?
No vote, we just moved it to action, I think.
Well, yeah, okay. Okay, well, I was just asking if there's any questions. All right, so no, no other comments? All right, all in favor of moving this to action, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That one's unanimous? Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve the proposed changes to the 2019, 2020 school year calendar.
Second.
Okay, that was a, that was a ditto from last time, Dr. Chase and Ms. Young. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, this next one's going to have to come back because it's more complicated. But 12.04, approval proposed changes for the 2020, 21 school year calendar.
More changes?
There's a lot of early outs, which I have to say, I've heard from a lot of people in in my community that would prefer not to have all these early outs. So do we want to have a discussion of this tonight? Or do we want to just have this come, we'll just have Mr. McCosker saying, hey, no.
Wait, wait, no, what does this?
Move it to January.
Yeah, this will come back.
What are y'all doing?
Send, send us the memo. All right, anybody has any questions on this? Please bring it back. This is not for anything on the current school year. The school year begins next August 10th, okay? All right, that'll be coming back to us the next, next year. So y'all pay attention out there. The upcoming meetings, joy, joy. We have a special call meeting next Tuesday at 6:00. And the only item on that agenda that will be published later this week is the superintendent's evaluation.
What?
So I see you all at 6:00. It's a special calls meeting that we will go into closed session.
Look, I think.
I think that'll be on the published, that's going to be, it's going to be on the published agenda. All right, happy, happy week, guys. See you next week.
I don't want to get, I don't want to get an unfunded mandate that we imposed on ourselves. Because that makes sense, I mean, that does sound right, but you know what I mean. We got enough stuff we got to pay for.